Madam Clerk, next item please.
Item C, Economic Development Incentive Loan Agreement with Apex Engineering International, LLC.
Good morning, Commissioners, Sherdel Brethett, Economic Developer. And indeed, it is a blessing to be here again today. I'd like to just bring to your attention Apex Engineering International, LLC. Apex is an engineering and manufacturing company specializing in the commercial, military, and business jet industry. Parent company of Apex is HM Dunn Aerial Systems. And Dunn provides engineering design support to fabrication, complex machining, sheet metal fabrication, complex composite manufacturing, in-house processing, and complete assembly capabilities to the aerospace industry. Currently occupies 305,000 square feet between two facilities here in Wichita. First location being 1804 West Second Street, that's Apex location, and the 4201 South 119th Street, which is a Dunn location. Dunn currently also has locations in Ullis, Texas, and St. Louis, Missouri. Dunn has recently won new work on the Cessna CJ-4 line and is contemplating moving that work to Wichita from a Nova Scotia facility operated by another company. Concurrently, in order to gain operating efficiency, Dunn is considering relocating machine work from its Ullis and St. Louis facilities to Wichita. Finally, it is considering expanding production capacity by adding new metal processing equipment in order to secure additional contracts from the aviation OEMs here in town. They're asking for approval of the loan agreement in the amount of $90,000 at this time and to do this work here in Wichita. In return, the company will add 108 new jobs to the existing 168 at the Second Street facility. The average wage for the new jobs will be $35,363, with the average of all jobs of $49,597. Company's NACE have about $39,186, so it exceeds that. As an alternative, instead of relocating the work to the Wichita facility, Dunn could obtain operating efficiencies by moving the work to one of the company's other facilities in Texas or Missouri. Funding consideration proposed $90,000 loan to Apex will be provided from funds budgeted for economic development incentives and the economic development program at the transfer from economic development contingency account. Our return on our investment does meet our benchmark return proposed of 1.3 for each $1 cost that we provide to the company. I'm happy to say that each company that I've had the opportunity since working with Sedgwick County as the economic developer, that every company we provided assistance to, that I also have the opportunity to follow up with them, to stay with them from A to Z, and to make sure that they're keeping their commitment. And if for any reason it does not seem that they're not keeping their commitment or there's some shortfalls, then we do hold them accountable according to the agreement. And we have shown in previous history with regards to even clawbacks that everyone does their end of the deal. So make sure it's not in all of our eyes and costs in all of our teeths. So, that being said, we would ask that the commission would approve the resolution and authorize the chairman to sign. At this time, we take any questions? We do have in our attendance from the company, Mr. David Holter, who's the Vice President and General Manager, along with David McClure.
All right, thank you. We do have a question from Commissioner Peter John.
Good morning. My question is this. My recollection is approximately four or five years ago, we had a similar request from Apex Engineering and was brought before this commission for a similar forgivable loan. Could you go through and walk me through that history, please, Mr. Brethett?
Yeah, we did. We sure did. As a matter of fact, it was for the amount of $225,000. And then after two months into the period, I guess the company was looking at trying to do some reorganization. They decided that they did not want to continue in the process, and they returned the principal of that amount that was provided to them back to Sedgwick County in its fullest.
And it was about 2010, 2009?
That is correct.
Okay. I wanted to put that on the record because at that time, I was one of the commissioners, and I believe, I think the entire commission, I may be wrong on that, but I think the entire commission voted in support of that forgivable loan at that time. And the reasons that were provided at that time are very similar to the reasons that you've brought in front of us today. But a number of other things have changed since then, and I was very much interested in terms of getting at least the history placed on the record. Let me, I have some other comments, but a fair other questions from other commissioners, I'd be happy to wait. And I'd also be interested, I don't know if anyone in the public wants to testify on this issue, but I'd be interested in hearing if there's anyone in the public who'd like to hear him speak, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Sherdel, have you been advised if anyone wants to make a comment? Does anyone want to speak?
Yes, Mr. Rod Holter, Vice President, would like to make a comment.
Please.
Thank you, Commissioners, for considering our request. We're aggressively working to pull jobs back into Wichita. We did a handshake on a deal last week that brings jobs back from Korea. The Citation Four job that we were talking about earlier is work from Nova Scotia that's coming here. And we're working on another bid right now for work out of Tulsa, out of state. So we're working very, very hard to grow our business. And it takes a lot of funds to grow the business. And there's a lot of investment in equipment and upfront costs to bring those jobs here. And that's why we're here asking. We're asking for some help. We do provide good solid wages for our employees and medical and health care, and it's a good place to work. And I've been there about a year now, and I've worked with the OEMs in town, and I'm experiencing this side of the business. And it's much more difficult, it's much tighter funding. And what I am seeing is there's other people that do want us. And they approach us independently and say, "Well, do you consider our state?" And we don't want to leave Wichita. Our folks, our team members are good here, and we want to continue to grow and build a good substantial business base here in Wichita. Thank you.
Excuse me, sir. And these funds primarily are to help cover moving costs?
Yeah. And one of the jobs that we acquire out of St. Louis, we're buying the equipment from the OEM of the Tier One, and we have to move that equipment here. And it's going to cost far in excess of what we're asking for, what we're able to ask for, but it's going to cost us money to move it and then pour foundations and set them up, yes.
Okay, thank you. We have a question from Commissioner Skelton.
I just want to make a comment. I really want to give you my heartfelt thanks for keeping those jobs here in Wichita and moving some that are not currently in Wichita to Wichita, adding to our economy, adding to our tax base and employment base, and certainly the hopeful further success of your company, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. Another comment here.
Yes, Commissioners, Gary Schmidt, Intertrust Bank, Chair of GWDC also. I just want to reiterate what Sherdel said, that Apex has the opportunity to move to other locations. I've been told that Charleston offered to build a plant for them and help them move equipment and also provide training. What they're talking about is bringing jobs from St. Louis and equipment from St. Louis. I think that also is going to provide additional jobs in our community, additional investment in our community. There's also a plant in Texas that has the excess capacity that they can move these jobs to, but I think for numerous reasons, they've decided Wichita's their location. Like they said, that's where their people are, and they feel very comfortable. One other thing, a little off the subject, I just came from the American Red Cross Heroes' Breakfast this morning. And Ron was there, and they basically was a sponsor for one of the heroes. So the other thing I like to see whenever we support investments in companies is their participation in our local community. And I just want to say Apex was there, and it really showed me some character for this company that sometimes we don't see. So I would encourage you to support the request and bring more jobs into our community for a better future and a good investment for our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Gary Plummer. I'm with the Wichita Metro Chamber of Commerce, and it's a pleasure to be here today and speak in favor of this project for your consideration. Having lived in Wichita for three years, one of the amazing things I see about this community and this metro area are the number of companies like Apex Engineering that are out there creating new jobs, bringing new wealth to our community. And they're not necessarily the household names that we've all become accustomed to here in the air capital, but they're out there in scores of companies, and it's really a pleasure to work with companies like Apex. You know, in the last 10 years, this company has paid $949,000 in property tax. Of that, $231,557 has been the share that has gone to Sedgwick County. And this proposal that you have before you today for the forgivable loan has a discounted cost over a 10-year period to the county of about $87,000. But during that 10-year period, consistent with your 1.3 ratio that you like to adhere to, the county's going to receive $120,501 back in revenue. And that's a $33,544 profit. So I think sometimes it's difficult to understand what that 1.3 means, but that spells it out pretty well, that this is a good deal for the county, and it helps attract new jobs and new investment to Wichita. And we would urge that you support it this morning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Plummer.
Mr. Plummer?
We have a question from Commissioner Peter John.
Yes.
Mr. Plummer, thank you for coming down and speaking with us this morning. I did want to visit with you publicly here, since you're in support of the proposal before us today, and ask you because one of the issues that came up recently, the chamber was in support of the recent city sales tax hike. Am I correct in that?
That's correct.
And part of that was to be used for these sorts of incentives, correct?
That is correct.
Yesterday's Wichita Eagle featured an article that, you didn't mention any names, but you said attacking local businesses for growing jobs in Wichita, and you referred to them, some anti-business rants or branding Wichita with an anti-business climate. Would you, do you want to be more specific in terms of exactly who you were referring to and what's going on that concerns you enough that you and Mr. Rozell wrote a column in yesterday's Wichita in the newspaper?
Thank you, Commissioner, for that question. I don't want to get personal and name names this morning, but there are people in this community who make a regular business to go in front of bodies like this in the city council and drag the good names of companies through the mud for taking advantage of state, national, local programs that help grow jobs in our community. And we have probably been remiss in not standing up and telling the other side of the story in a little bit more aggressive fashion. That's what the letter was intended to do, and we're making a commitment to do that more in the future.
Well, let me ask you because I'm going to go back, and I wouldn't refer to the Wall Street Journal as an anti-business article, anti-business publication, but in their editorial on March 6th of 2012 entitled "A Wichita Shocker," and subtitled "You Can Beat City Hall," the first sentence says, "Local politicians like to get in bed with local business, and taxpayers are usually the losers." So "Three Tears for Voter Revolt" in Wichita, Kansas, last week that shows such sweetheart deals can be defeated. And talked about the Wichita City Council approving a subsidy for a hotel project downtown that the voters rejected at a referendum by about the same margin the voters rejected the sales tax last month. I was curious, I'll be curious to see if the Wall Street Journal comes forward with another editorial on this, but I'd like your comments in terms of, you know, there's a lot of concern about subsidies, and at the national level, we've had terrible debacles. The Solyndra subsidy fiasco was one of many at the national level, where government and politicians, and there's this inside relationship between the politically powerful and often large business that receive and benefit from subsidies. And I'm concerned about differentiating this. I hear from citizens who say, "Hey, there was a message sent by the voters last month with over 60% rejecting the sales tax with a large part of that money to be used for these types of programs." And I'd really like to get your comments on the record concerning that election results and the 60-some percent of the voters who said no.
Well, we certainly respect the wishes of the voters. They sent a message about where they stood on this issue. You know, if we could change the system on a national basis, which I think was probably most of what the Wall Street Journal was referring to, we would sign on and try to find a new model for economic development in this country. But it's the model that's being managed around the country right now. And we don't think that it's a good decision for Wichita, just based on principle, to say, "We're not going to compete with these other communities and the way they do economic development." We feel like in the long run, it's better for this community if we do compete. And we were hoping that with more resources, we could have more projects, like the one you had before you this morning, which I repeat to you, is a good investment that's going to make a return to the county. It's not an expense. And so although we honor the decisions of the voters, we still are in the business of economic development, and we're going to try to work within the system that we have to work within, try to be successful.
Last week, the Governor's Council of Economic Advisors got a report, received a report indicating that industrial jobs, only 600 have been brought back from the 29,000 that have been lost, going back to the Great Recession of 2009. We've been following this same paradigm in terms of what everybody else is doing around the country in terms of trying to recruit jobs. And we've got a big problem in the sense that Washington has had their boot on the throats of a lot of businesses here in Kansas in general and Sedgwick County in particular when it comes to aircraft in general and the business jet industry in particular. And I would be interested in getting your comments in terms of, you know, why the paradigm that you're talking about has been in place, we've been following it, actually going well before the economic downturn of 2008, 2009. And how do you think that this is going to work better in the future? Are we just going to do more of the same?
Well, Commissioner, knowing what a fan you are of Ronald Reagan, I'm going to use a Ronald Reagan quote this morning to respond to that. It was Ronald Reagan who said, "Status quo is Latin for the mess that we're in." And we're quite frankly not satisfied with the status quo. And we're looking for new ways to do business differently. Indicative of that is our partnership with Wichita State, the city, the county, Wichita Downtown Development, REAP, and others that are working on the blueprint for regional economic growth. We have to look at the clusters that are going to be successful in our economy in the future and help them grow and help keep them in Wichita. So we're always open to new ideas. We're not stuck in a system from the past, but we also recognize the reality of what it takes to compete in this environment today, and we're going to do the very best we can with the resources that we have.
Well, I've proposed an alternate approach that would, I think, benefit everyone, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. But, Mr. Plummer, I want to thank you for coming down and testifying before us this morning and at least beginning, or maybe expanding, the dialogue that I think got started at least during the campaign this year on the city's one cent sales tax. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a comment from Commissioner Skelton.
Question. Mr. Plummer.
Mr. Plummer, we have one more question.
Gary, when you're looking at an EDX like this, what kind of factors are evaluated? And tell me, you know, basically how you quantitate the cost benefit analysis.
Very good question, Commissioner. Are we going to have more people speak? We have someone in the room who can speak better to that than I, and that's Tim Chase, who is the President of GWDC. Could I defer that question?
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim, do you want to answer that question? Anybody else?
No, go ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tim Chase, President of the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition. Commissioner Skelton, I'll start with an explanation of your question or answer to your question. There are all kinds of forces in the economy, good and bad, and we try to take into consideration as many of those as we can document with a project. As an example, the number of jobs that are created, the capital investment that goes into it, the net increase in government funding, and the personal income. The increase in personal income are sort of the four big measurements that we always put in any project. But the actual model that is used by the CEDBR at WSU takes into consideration all of those things, and then it looks at some very minute measurements. And as an example, companies are asked, "How many folks are going to visit Wichita during the course of business? And how many room nights might those folks consume on an annual basis?" And so they take a look at that, and they take a look at how much income the governments will receive from those visits. So it's a combination of very large measures, and also it goes very deeply into every aspect of what a project like this might have in terms of a ripple effect. There's direct and there's indirect impacts. And the direct impact is the job, the 108 jobs that we're talking about today. And when that job is filled in the economy, because it exports the product it is making, another job is created in support of that. And the economists would tell you that that's not just a one-for-one, that depending on what the initial company is doing, it could be one-to-one and a half, could be one-to-one, two, could be as many as one-to-three additional jobs in the community. Is that a answer to your question?
That's a partial answer. I think it's pretty deep, but that, I think, explains the big picture.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Couple of things if I might add to this. I think that this is a great example of how the economic development process works. First of all, your GWDC team spends a great percentage of the time, a vast majority of their time, working with companies we have here today. It's often thought that we are only involved with recruitment of new companies into the area, and we all certainly appreciate that when it happens. But the real rubber meets the road by taking good care of what we have here today. And this is a great example of that. Commissioner Peter John, your comment as we began talking here talked about a similar incentive that was granted to the company, and that as things unfolded, that incentive was repaid. If every time we came before you with a deal, it was a guarantee, then you might wonder, well, why was that project, why did it not unfold the way we guessed it would? But the same token, if we had a guarantee, why would we come asking for money? If the company guarantees that they're going to execute in a certain way, then it would be irresponsible to ask for the government to think in terms of helping the company actually execute on what they are trying to do. Does that address your concerns?
Commissioner Peter John?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, my concerns are broadened in a number of areas, and you've touched on one of them that's very significant to me because I believe that the model that's used by Wichita State is a relatively straightforward input-output model for generating that 1.3 number that Mr. Brethett mentioned in his earlier testimony. I was curious, do you have a copy of that econometric model?
I do not, but it's part of the package that is presented. I don't know. Thank you.
Well, the reason I'm asking, I've been trying to get my hands on an actual copy of that model, and I've been told it's proprietary, and I thought maybe if you had a copy, you might be able to help me. But if you don't, I certainly, you haven't, you're as successful as I have in terms of actually having it. I get the results, and I appreciate your comments concerning the fact that there is a certain amount of risk and uncertainty, especially in our contemporary business climate. But having said that, I think that the main cause for risk and uncertainty in today's business climate is a function of what we, and I'm not talking just about the county, because actually I think the county is relatively, compared to the other bodies, were much better, but other levels of government. And whether it's negative, whether it's unfunded mandates onto the private sector, whether it's higher level of taxes, whether it's uncertainty, I hear articles now about what's called lawfare, a combination of warfare and the law, where you basically are using the law as a tool to bludgeon your business competition. Or, and we have a whole major industry in Southern California right now that's being under a cyber attack, which 20, 30 years ago, who would have even, cyber attack? Come on. But the risk and uncertainty of business is certainly higher today than I can think of at any time. So I appreciate you coming down and giving your insight, and I appreciate your comments before us this morning. Thank you.
Okay, very well. One last final comment, and you're more than welcome to have the results of the study that is done for every project, as I mentioned. Included in every one of those is another number that we really don't take any time, or I don't think we take enough time to appreciate, and that's what's called an economic impact to the regional economy. We stay very narrowly focused on the county is going to invest a dollar, and for every dollar they invest, they're going to get a dollar and 30 cents back, which is very good accountability for the taxpayers. But in addition to that, there is also this ripple effect within the community that has a very high economic impact. And in this case, we're talking about $7.7 million every year that this company has these jobs put into place with this investment. So over the course of the 10 years that this deal is being monitored by Sherdel and his team, you're talking about a $77 million economic impact to the community, to the regional economy. And I just wanted to share that number because it's not a number that we typically think about. Any other questions?
I see none. See none. Thank you. Yes, if you'd like to make one more comment.
Thank you.
To Commissioner Skelton's question, when we go out and market for a new job, and we're considered a super-tier two, so our customers are looking for an integrator that builds a value-added assembly that goes into a factory. So when, we can't possibly do all the parts and pieces and have all the machinery to do everything in that assembly. So the jobs that I was talking about before, we actually share that work because we can't do it all. And we share that work in Wichita. We try to keep it close. One of the jobs that we had won from a local, large company, the machinings, the large heavy machinings are currently machined in California. We're working with a local supplier, a smaller shop than ours, a friend of mine, and he is going to invest and buy two machines to machine those parts and employ people here. So there's other, that ripple effect that comes out of the work that we do is much greater than what happens inside AEI's doors. It's also what happens with our current local supply base.
Okay. Thank you for that comment. See, I think, one more speaker, Mr. Todd.
Good morning, Mr. Commission Chairman, and members of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. My name is John Todd. I live at 1559 North Payne Avenue here in Wichita, Kansas. Thank you for allowing me to share with you some thoughts on what my philosophical thoughts on business subsidies with you today. Commissioner Carl Peter John mentioned a couple of valid issues that... Commissioner Carl Peter John mentioned a couple of valid issues, that one was in 2012 on the Ambassador Hotel. Rather than read the article that was published, and rather than read my testimony, which includes a large part of this article, I would like to submit the article and my testimony in full for the record.
That would be well. Thank you.
The, on the Ambassador Hotel, I want to make a couple of comments. This is part of this article. Was exempting the Ambassador Hotel from the hotel tax, and at least $10 million in other subsidies. The measure was sold in the name of jobs and urban redevelopment, and the local power brokers were all for it, the Chamber of Commerce, the political class, the city newspaper. It says, "For the voters, the core issue is fairness. What Americans seem to want most from government these days is equal treatment." I'm not going to read the rest of the article. I might remind the Commission of the recent November 4, 2014 Wichita sales tax increase referendum that voters defeated by a margin of 62% to 38% that this referendum included an economic development and jobs incentive package. It doesn't appear to me that your constituents are in any mood for continuing what they view as unfair business incentives. I believe, and I wanted to show, and I'll leave this with you, too. Gary Varvel of the Indianapolis Star Newspaper does some interesting political cartooning, and he shows these two, what appears to be very wealthy individuals sitting in their wingback chairs at the club or wherever. And the caption says, "From one, one is asking the other, which government road earned you your first million?" I'm afraid that's the view that a lot of the public has on these incentive programs. And I think there really is need to have some, what I consider as constructive public dialogue relating to this issue. I believe your constituents will favorably, respond favorably if you pursue a policy of providing economic equality of opportunity for all citizens, everyone. This means limiting the role of government to that of providing the framework for equality, for equally protecting the rights and properties of all citizens through the rule of law, and not by acting as a participant in any activity that places it in a position of granting a competitive advantage to one group of citizens to the exclusion of others. I appreciate you bringing Ronald Reagan's quote. I'd like to essentially conclude with one that I think is appropriate here today, quote from Ronald Reagan. "We are learning that the way to prosperity is not more bureaucracy and redistribution of wealth, but less government and more freedom for the entrepreneur and for the creativity of the individual," end quote. This is a notable policy that you should adopt here in Sedley County. I believe it exemplifies the limited government principles of our founders. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Skelton.
John, how are you today?
I am excellent. How about you, sir?
I'm well. I've got 33 days left.
You're a short timer.
Well, you know, I've enjoyed your company over the last 10 years.
Dave Bayes told me the other day that, I wish him a long life, and he said he wanted to live till Kellogg was completed.
Well, he might do that, you know. You know, you've had a lot of passion in your numerous appearances before local governing bodies. You know, you like to keep your mind on what the voters think, you respect constituent views, you have a lot of passion and conviction in what you say, and as I said, you've been a regular for 10 years, and you definitely have a pointed philosophy. And I've had a lot of fun with you, and I'm going to miss you, actually.
I'm still in town.
Well, I got a quote here.
Now, as a retired person, I do reserve the option of getting up by the crack of noon.
Well, you know what? I'm not going to make any comments on that one, but I respect that. Well, I want to tell you thanks, old buddy, and, you know, one of these days, I'd sure like to see you step forward and run for local public office. So with that in mind, maybe we'll see you sometime down the road.
Thank you, Commissioner. I really appreciate that. I wanted to make an appeal here today. I really think there is a need for constructive public dialogue relating to this issue, and I would challenge both sides to get involved and provide speakers that have both points of view. And it's interesting to me sometimes, you know, I have a lot of fun in my role as a retired civic activist. I go into the camp of many people that I disagree with, and it's really fascinating when you enter into constructive dialogue to find out that you actually have a lot of common views that you can share. And I really think that this issue of economic development incentives is something that needs to be vetted thoroughly, and that there is really a wonderful opportunity for us to do that in our community before we move forward with massive subsidies for anyone. And, you know, I really truly believe that incentives work, that if they work for one, they work best when they're offered to everyone in the form of low taxes, less regulation, and the economic vitality and the entrepreneurial spirit of our community is vibrant. It's here. I am very positive about it, and we can see economic uplift that is unimaginable if we release that. But if we continue the failed model that we've been following without the dialogue, I'm afraid we're going to head down the same path that we've been on.
That's all I had to say. Thank you. Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
I want you to clarify--
It is before noon, you know.
Glad you got up early this morning. Would you like you to clarify for the record that I'm going to take your comments that you are opposed to this item before the Commission this morning, but I'd like you to clarify in terms of, it sounds to me your opposition is in principle and not particularly focused on Apex Engineering International in particular.
My interest is not to make this personal. I absolutely appreciate Apex Engineering, their being in Wichita, and the positive things that they're doing. So this is not a personal assault on them. My comments are philosophical. If you have $90,000, or I don't know what the grant, what the forgivable loan is in the Treasury, let's reduce taxes for everyone in our community. I can see great economic uplift by doing that. You'll have constituents out there and people who will appreciate it. I think you can see widespread, and the amount we're talking about here is not the amount, but the principle of low taxes and less government regulation for everyone. We can create an environment that Wichita is absolutely a second to none. And, you know, we have the entrepreneurial spirit. We have a long history of it. And I am not anti-business. I'm really pro-business, and I'm pro-Wichita. I'm a great fan, and I think the reason why we need the dialogue that I'm suggesting is that we need to look at some things that we can look at together and mutually support and work towards the uplift. We can be a model for the rest of the country if we get it right here.
I appreciate your comments, but I'd like to, if I may, add for the record, Mr. Todd, you mentioned you were retired. What did you do before you were retired?
I spent 30 years as a self-employed real estate broker developer.
So you were a small businessman, basically?
Yes, sir, I was.
Okay. Did you serve in any business organizations while you were working?
Wichita Association of Realtors, Kansas Association of Realtors, National Association of Realtors, became active in the Wichita Independent Business Association, I will just to name a few.
You were on their board, I believe, weren't you?
I've been on their board of directors, yes, sir.
And you're still active in other political groups? I saw a newspaper article that mentioned that you were an officer in a local political group, according to the Wichita Eagle.
I really would like to clarify that I'm standing here today not talking as an officer of any group, I'm talking as an individual, private citizen. So the views I express here today belong to me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. I don't see anyone else asking to speak, and Commissioners, is there any other comment here? Commissioner Peter John.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman, because I want to second the comments. Apex International is a great corporate citizen, and it's a great company. But I'm going to quote from an article, and I'm going to ask with the Chairman and my colleagues' indulgence, and I hope they'll listen to me a little bit. This is from an editorial that was written by one of the most, and arguably the most successful businessmen in our country. It appeared August 6, 2014, in USA Today, and folks that know me, I'm not the best at filing, but I managed to dig this out of my files, and I'm going to quote from this article. This businessman made the comment, and I think it's very relevant for where we are today and why my vote today is going to reflect some of the opinions expressed here, and the alternate paradigm that I want to suggest that I've been advocating for, I will continue to advocate, and as long as I have the privilege of sitting at this bench, continuing to push for, if we have the success. But this article on "How to Really Aturn the Economy" is the title of the article, and if I may quote, "Today, opportunities for such work, and the work here is improving the economy, are not what they should be. We need a different approach focused less on politics and more on basic principles. First, we need to encourage principled entrepreneurship. Companies should earn profits by creating value for customers and acting with integrity, the opposite of today's rampant cronyism. Too many businesses focus on getting subsidies and mandates from government rather than creating value for customers. According to George Mason University's Mercatus Center, such favors cost us more than $11,000 per person and lost GDP, gross domestic product, every year, a $3.6 billion economic hit, compounding the problem are destructive regulations affecting whether and how business and vets and employees work. Federal rules cost America an estimated $1.86 trillion per year, calculated the Competitive Enterprise Institute." Now, this article goes on to talk about the government failure, as I view it, in terms of our effort to turning the economy around, and concludes with, "Our government's decades-long top-down approach to job creation has failed. Its policies have made our problems worse, leaving tens of millions chronically on or underemployed, millions of whom have given up even ever finding meaningful work. In doing so, our government has not only thwarted real job creation, but has also reduced the supply and quality of goods and services that make people's lives better and undermine the culture required to sustain a free society. When it comes to creating opportunities for all, we can do much better. It's time to let people seek opportunities that best suit their talents, for business to forsake cronyism, and for government to get out of the way," unquote. The author of this editorial from USA Today, page 8A, August 6, 2014, Charles Koch, the Chairman and CEO of Koch Industries. Now, I cite it because I do think there's an alternate paradigm. It was mentioned earlier that Apex paid $949,000 in property taxes over 10 years, and I believe it was over 10 years. Is that correct? I've put a proposal out to reduce property taxes for every business in this community, but not only for every business, for every citizen, for every property taxpayer in this community, young or old, rich or poor. They'd have the opportunity, if the county got out of the property tax business, the property tax bills would be reduced by approximately a quarter. I've been pushing for that in the past, I'm pushing for it today, and my vote on this issue today will reflect the fact that I want to give a bigger benefit to Apex International and to every other entrepreneurial-oriented business, property owner, whether they're large or small, in this community. I also want to emphasize for the record that, and to try and convince my colleagues, that we've got a paradigm in front of us that we've been following, but everybody else in the country is following it, too. We're all like a bunch of crawdads in the bucket, trying to work out for the next big deal that's coming down the road. I think we need a new approach, and that new approach is Sedgwick County's starting a party. We're going to get the county out of the property tax business, replace it with sales tax. Instead of having the sales tax go for spending, we're going to eliminate the county's property tax. Now, I'm going to mention, LeBette County voted on retaining an existing sales tax that's being used for lowering their property taxes. Now, I'd like to go a step further than where they've gone. The voters overwhelmingly approved retaining that sales tax in the election last month, unlike what happened here. But if we follow a new paradigm and try a unique marketing approach, saying, "Look, Sedgwick County's starting a party, and each and every one of you sitting here and who can hear my voice are welcome to come join us," a unique marketing proposition, we're going to be cutting and eliminating the county's property tax. And I firmly believe that based on where the voters sent a clear message, November 4, 2014. Now, I think they're looking at us on the elected side and saying, "Hey, how many times do we have to send it?" They sent it two years ago in 2012, the City of Wichita voters again did. And I think that's true not only for the City of Wichita, but I think it's true in this county and across the state. Property taxes are too high, they need to be reduced. There's a way we can do this and still fund the critical functions that Sedgwick County provides today. And so my vote today, Apex is a great company, followed them, obviously, but my vote today is going to be for lowering property taxes for all. The proposal today, I'm looking at $90,000, 10 years, 108 jobs. By my calculation, that's $83 per employee per year. I don't think this is going to be a deal breaker one way or the other. And looking at the big picture, what we have been trying and what we have been doing has not worked. The Governor's Council of Economic Advisers shows that. When you've got, we've lost 29,000 manufacturing jobs. It's important to try industrial jobs, I believe was the word they used. Many of them are manufacturing. We need to strengthen our local economy, we need to strengthen our state's economy, we need to get Washington to get off the necks of our businesses, but that's a bigger discussion for the other day. All I can do is try and push for where this county needs to go, and so my vote today is going to reflect the fact that I'd like to give Apex a property tax break, and all the other businesses and property taxpayers in this community a property tax pay. But I cannot support this agreement in front of us today. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we've had a lot of discussion, philosophy, perspective, ideology, all over the map. The issue before us has to do with a forgivable loan. Commissioner Skelton.
Mr. Chairman, I find this proposal in front of us is a great deal for the community. We're going to add over 100 jobs here. Those employees that are going to be brought in from outside this community are going to go out and buy goods and services, they're going to buy real estate, they're going to purchase durable goods, they're going to add economic value, they're going to strengthen our economy. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the resolution and authorize the Chairman to sign the agreement.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, call the vote, please.
Commissioner Peter John.
Aye.
Commissioner Skelton.
Aye.
Commissioner Norton.
Aye.
Chairman Nunnru.
Aye.
Sherdell, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Gentlemen and all those who participated, thank you. Next item, please.
Item D, Exploration Place Presentation.